Steve, can you start with a roll call?
Sure, Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Tabasnik?
Here.
Mr. Patches?
Present.
Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
And Mr. Williams?
Present. How's everyone doing tonight?
Here.
Given the absences we have, unless or until Tammy shows up at the meeting, I am going to seat all of the supporting players here. So everybody can participate and vote on the matters as of now. The first item is a review and action on applications. The first one being 2023-49. That's an 824 review. It's a referral from the City of Norwalk, request to acquire six properties that abut the South Norwalk School property to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, recreational and open space, and right away improvements, including removing existing sightline obstructions by the modification to travel lanes and reconfiguration of the intersection at South Main, Meadow, Wilson Avenue and Meadow Street Extension. And who is going to present on this?
I will, Taysha Thompson.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name's Taysha Thompson. I'm Assistant Corporation Counsel for the City of Norwalk. And in Alan Lowe's absence, I will be presenting on his behalf. So you pretty much received the description of what we're seeking to do here, which is an 824 referral for the acquisition or some consistency recommendation with the P O C D for the acquisition of the six properties. So this is for the Norwalk School, which is slated to begin construction in August of 2025. It's anticipated, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on 11.7 acres and it's anticipated that there will be about 685 students with 85% capacity initially, 8,000, or sorry, 86,000 square feet on a two-story building. The city has allocated $76 million for the land acquisition and development of the school. The property will benefit from a 2022 state special legislation action, which granted the city a new reimbursement rate of 60% in lieu of the previous 33% for renovation work and 22% for construction. We're scheduled to start going out to bid at the end of this year. So, and and the properties that we're seeking to acquire are 28, 32, 36 and 38 Oxford Street, 16 Meadow Street and a sliver along, I think it's South Main Street, that used to be owned by a railway. It's a small sliver property that will be used to improve the sightlines by T N P. And that's pretty much everything. If anyone has any questions, I am open to answering.
As Ms. Thompson, as you may not know, meeting before last, we went over this project in great detail. So we're familiar with the project itself and there was some discussion at that meeting about the city trying to acquire some additional property. So we are familiar with this. But are there, are there questions from the members of the commission?
One quick question. Is this, are these parcels also part of the reimbursement package? So will be reimbursed, the city will be reimbursed at the higher rate?
I am not aware of that. I don't think so.
They are not. They are not. Okay.
It's my understanding, Nick, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that these are funds, unexpended funds from the Jefferson School project that will be transferred to this project.
That's correct.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead, Richard.
Alan is not here tonight, obviously, so I'm not sure Attorney Tom, if you can answer this question. But I went back up to the property after our last meeting when we were made aware of the possibility of buying these properties. And I believe, if I was looking at the right roads, that it's the whole elevation problem with accessing the back lot of this would be solved by acquiring some of these properties. Do you know if the property in the back will now be utilized as something other than inaccessible?
I'm going to punt that one to Tom because he just unmuted his.
Yeah.
His screen.
If you look at the map of these particular properties, you'll see they tend to be on the lower part of the lot, you will. So no, they don't really benefit the upper portion of the property. We'll not provide any.
Either side?
No, no. I don't believe so. Certainly not on the Meadow Street side, no. And I don't believe so on the so-called sliver. I don't think it goes out that far.
Thank you.
We could pull up the map. Brian, do you have that? Randy? Or Dan can pull it up.
Yeah, I'm just, that's actually just downloading. It's taken a while though.
Hi, are there people living in any of these properties? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yes.
We still waiting for it to upload, Brian?
Yeah, I'm pulling them from the plans that you had looked at for the school project. So they're pretty large files.
We may get Dan.
I don't mean to take up too much. Okay. In this, it appeared to me when I was standing on the hill that that might solve the problem, but apparently it doesn't.
No, I don't believe so. To the question about the residents, we will certainly do our best to work with them to find alternative housing.
Thank you. This is, I'm a relatively new member of the commission. This is the first time I've seen sort of this process. I was just curious how much time are residents sort of given to move in general with something like this?
I honestly don't know the answer. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't do it before we needed the property. I don't want to speak for Alan here. Sorry.
Okay.
We can get to that. As I said, we will certainly work with them. We're not putting anybody out in the street.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have the map up. How much of the rail property is being purchased? Is it the entire sliver that's along South Main Street?
Can you just go down? I'm sorry. It's this piece right here. Yeah, you probably, you probably can't see my pointer. It is the, it's the piece on the bottom and it kind of like goes. No, it doesn't go all the way up.
Do we know how far up it goes?
Yeah, let me find it.
Sure, thank you. I'm wondering if this can help with Richard's earlier question.
All right, I know that Darren is on. Darren, can you pop in on that one?
Yeah, hi folks. Sorry, we don't have a visual tonight. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So it's approximately 1.13 acres. It's part of several properties that were acquired from CSX Railroad by Seagull Properties. It was about three or four years ago. We're acquiring a portion of one of those series of lots and a portion of a second series of lots. It does start at the at the intersection, South Main and Meadow Street Extension. And it runs up, drives up fairly far. But again, the purpose of the acquisition itself is to realign the roadway. So it is, you know, it's, I'm not sure there's been any evaluation to what extent the topography would allow for access to upper portions of a lot. But I do, I do know that the intention in addition to allowing for expansion and realignment of the right ways to provide pedestrian access in the middle portion of it directly to where the school is situated on the One Meadow Street Extension property, 11 plus acre property, if that helps out.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a request. I'm not sure if you can do it at this time. Can you pull up an image on Google Maps? So this way we can see the exact area.
I have it, Brian. I can, I can.
Thanks. Can you do X marks the spot? Do you have that option of circling or X-ing?
Uh, maybe.
Thank you.
We'll try.
JJ, what is it, what is it you're looking for?
I'm just looking at my phone and it's so small. So I just want it enlarged.
Okay.
I believe it's, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's.
28 should be the tough one, yes.
Yeah, so Brian, can you click on that one? Yeah, what are, the address didn't change to the left of your screen. Just want to see what the address is. Okay, so that's 36. So yeah, you're looking at 28, 32, 36 and 38 Oxford. So all of those properties. Right.
And then the rail spurs of this side.
Right.
Right. And then 16 Meadow Street. And then the railroad, yeah, is on the South Main Street side. Got it. And it's essential of the trees. I drove down South Main Street the other day, but it's good to see it from the aerial view. Thanks.
Okay, further questions? If not, let's go to the resolution. Can we pull that up, please? Definitely going to have to make that larger. Thank you, Brian.
For each of these numbered items, could we say, all of them seem to have a similar language of to provide for enhanced vehicular and so on. Could we say to provide one or more of the following uses and then provide that list? Because it seems like, I don't know, it read to me earlier that it needed to, each property needs to provide all of those. And so I wanted to just make sure it was one or more of those uses. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Did you want, did you want a bullet point? Or just, you know, colon and then everything listed?
Yeah, I think a colon could work. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's a, it's an or and not an and. Yep.
You can make that change. Just give me a second.
Thanks. I just want to make sure each property gets put to its best potential, so.
It's a good, it's a good point, Shapen.
Are you waiting for me to read the resolution?
Oh, no, sorry, we're just editing it, Taysha.
Okay.
We've all, we've all had this prior to the meeting, so everyone's had an opportunity to read it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Brian, do you want to say for one or more of the following purposes?
Brian, this is, this is Darren. You probably could just add an or instead of the and right after recreational and before open space. Let's see, we're some typing. Right there. And/or. Perfect.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. And then I can just consolidate the addresses down into one list or not.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll do that in post.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move.
Chapin has moved and Hector has, and Darius have seconded. I think we ought to do a roll call on this.
Sure. Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabasnik?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, now that we've approved the referral, we're being asked to approve the special appropriation. 2023-50 special appropriation, City of Norwalk, request to acquire six properties that abut the South Norwalk School property in the amount of $2,900,000. I think we've already explained that these are funds that will be being moved, excess funds from the Jefferson School project that will be moved to the South Norwalk School project. Any questions from members of the commission?
You're muted, Richard. Was I muted?
Yeah, you were.
Just a quick question. Have all of these deals been negotiated already? I mean, are they set for closing?
No, they're not that far along.
Can I ask you, Richard, does that concern you?
I always wondered about, you know, approving the funds for an acquisition on a deal that hasn't been done yet. It just kind of opens the hand if you're playing poker. What do I know? I'm sure, I'm sure this is how it's done.
I would think funding would need to be available, immediate funding available in order for you to negotiate that deal.
I guess it does.
Attorney Tom, any, any comment on that?
Well, my comment was going to be that the prices are pretty set by, pretty much set by the appraisals, right? So the appraisals have been obtained. We have some sense of value. So there is an idea of what is needed to close these deals.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a resolution on this? Brian, it seems to me we ought to make the same language change in this one
We'll do.
that we just made in the other.
Right.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Richard has made a motion and it looks like JJ has seconded. Any questions or comments? All right, if not, let's go directly to a vote. Steve, again, let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabasnik?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Hector, you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Unanimous as well.
Okay, good. Move on to the next item, 2023-50. I'm sorry, 2023-51. An 824 referral, City of Norwalk, request to acquire a portion of 11 Beldon Avenue for the expansion of the Norwalk Library. Report and recommend action. Who is going to speak to this? Attorney Tom, again?
Sure, that would also be me. This one is fairly straightforward. This is a partial acquisition of a parking lot for the purpose of expanding the library.
Is it physically for expanding the building or is it for additional parking?
Additional parking.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Darren Callahan, I just would note just quickly that the design plans are being sent out to bid and come back in a couple of months. So the design hasn't been worked up yet. You know, initially, it would be used for parking, but ultimately how the expansion would be designed may result in parking being adjusted. As you know, we're also acquiring three Beldon. So you may have variations where the expansion could be up the back or the expansion could be at the side of three Beldon or the expansion could be over both. And you have surface parking with the expansion above, basically on pillars above the either or lot. Just to be clear.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
Answered my question. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, JJ.
Will this parking lot be monitored, maintained by the Parking Authority?
Darren, I have not sure.
Yeah, yes, it will, as with all, you know, to the extent it's being utilized, you know, currently as a parking facility would be all within the jurisdiction of of the Parking Authority. You know, depending on whether it would be gated or not, I don't know, it's a little premature. But ultimately, it's a parking facility asset also within the Parking Authority jurisdiction.
Well, I'm asking specifically about the question of enforcement. Will there at any time be free parking after certain hours when the library is closed or not in use?
I don't think there's been any decision made about that yet. Again, this is, this is part, one piece of a multi-parcels acquisition. Again, three Beldon is in the process of being acquired. We still need to close on that. So how, and obviously, in three Beldon, it's an existing building the City Business Development Unit and of course, I believe, of the RDA may still be housed in there. So there's some shared use. It's hard to say at the moment how how that those parcels will be able to be given the most practical effect to the public. But I'm sure, but that is being looked at actively.
Right, I just want to go on record that since this parking abuts a city municipal building, it should be available for when there's snow emergencies or when people need to move their cars during the time when the library is closed, that the neighborhood can get access to it without being penalized or having to pay for the space.
Sure, that's a message we could definitely convey to the district of Traverse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? All right, if not, can we put up the resolution on this one? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So I just have a quick question. So being that you are going to present my question to parking and mobility, is it possible that we can get some sort of language in this resolution that can leave, you know, that can act as some breadcrumbs to get some eyes on it?
JJ, let's, let's, let's do that when we pull up the resolution again for action. I think, I think that's quite reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Anna, you have moved. Did I see your hand go up?
You. So moved.
And is it second? Is there a second? And Darius has seconded. Let's pull up the resolution and agree on that, the language that JJ is looking for.
So if I could just interject for a second, you know, and obviously with all the commissioners, I just really want to remind everyone, we're here under 824 jurisdiction. And so this, this actual language is being, was passed by the land use in, 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 land use in, I'm sorry, land use committee.
Building Management?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Land Use and Building Management Committee and would be the language that would be adopted by the council. I'm concerned about not the, not the use, which I think is, makes a tremendous amount of sense. What I'm concerned about is that if these have to go by eminent domain, I don't want to cloud the potential litigation issues. So if I, if I may ask, that we need a language intact. We spent quite a bit of time crafting it with the, with the view of having a clean, hopefully not having one, but if we have to, having a clean condemnation action.
If we were to simply place in here a suggestion, not a requirement, not a demand, just a suggestion, would that, in your view, Attorney Tom's, compromise the eminent domain?
Well, since the issue was raised by Attorney Callahan, I'm going to allow him to answer that. I mean, he raised the issue.
Again, sorry, I don't mean to take over the presentation here.
Oh, that's okay.
An apology to my colleague.
No worries.
So as, 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 as a suggestion or, you know, comment, no, I don't think it, it, it's a concern. I mean, it's going to be noted in the minutes, in any event. And obviously, you know, I've represented that I'm going to bring it to Mr. Travers. I believe Ms. Casey's, Ms. Wannascheck is on this call as well. So I'm sure that she will also express the interest in making that spot available. But yes, if it's, if it, if it, if it really provides a higher level of comfort to the commission as a suggestion, separate and apart from the authorization itself, I don't see it as really being detrimental.
All right.
I think having it in the minutes should be sufficient. You know, we've made the suggestion via our via the minutes and your representation that you'll pass along. And then we take no chance with disturbing.
JJ, is that acceptable to you?
I would prefer to have something in writing, but if the minutes will suffice, then I guess I will have to take that method. But I just wanted to go on record by saying because it's eminent domain, the public should benefit from this in a way that will relieve some of the overflow and the lack of parking in that area during off hours.
Yeah, so JJ, as, as we end this, this role, I will send an email to Mr. Travers and CC you on that email, asking for him to reach out to you specifically so you can express from your words exactly what you would like to see to that parcel.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Let's act on this and we'll, we'll be able to provide the city with a clean resolution with a note in the minutes for Mr. Travers to review. Again, let's do a roll call.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Pachas?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schumann?
Yes.
Is unanimous as well.
Okay, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on. We now have upcoming two public hearings. Beginning, beginning with twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four SPR RMS three ninety-four West Avenue LLC. Three seventy-three, three ninety-four West Avenue to Maple Street. This is District One Block Eight, lots ten, thirteen, and forty B. Proposed six-story plus or minus ninety-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three square foot use development with two hundred and four dwelling units. Let me begin for the public by explaining the process we, we use in our public hearings. The developers representative will have an opportunity to present the project as they see fit. Throughout that presentation, members of the commission are free to ask any questions they wish regarding the project. When that presentation has been completed, we will invite members of the public to speak at that, at that point. I will ask one of the staff members, probably Brian Baker, to explain just how you can access this meeting and be given the opportunity to speak. We do not place a time limit on how long you can speak. But in fairness to others who wish to speak and frankly, in fairness to us, given our rather lengthy agenda this evening, I'd ask that you be as brief as possible while at the same time making all of the points that are important to you. Because you will only have one opportunity to speak. We simply ask again that you keep your comments as brief as you can while saying everything that's important to you. And if you would, keep your comments collegial. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, we will turn it back to the developers representative for response to what they have heard. When the public is speaking, this is not a conversation you're having with the commission. It is simply your remarks regarding the project. And again, once those comments have been completed, the contractor will, or developer will have an opportunity to respond to any comments that have been made. Again, during that period, commission members will again have the opportunity to ask any questions they wish. This is not a special permit hearing. That does not restrict questions or comments that people can make. But it does restrict the commission in terms of the actions that we can take. For us, this is simply a site plan review. We insisted on a public hearing, although it's not required by law because of the important location of the project and because of the size of the project. So please understand while there may be some aspects of this project that we might not agree with, so long as it conforms to requirements of the site plan review. We're limited in terms of actions that, that we can take. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Sachi, who is representing the developer.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of Planning and Zoning Commission. Happy belated Labor Day, and I hope everyone had a pleasant summer dealing with the heat, humidity, and everything else. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. I represent the applicant RMS three ninety-four West Avenue LLC. You've heard this application once before in July. We will try to be as succinct as possible, but we do, you do recognize, and I'm sure you will afford us the time to make the presentation we need to make. Present this evening will be Randy Salvatore. He's a principal of the applicant. Patrick Carino and Vincent DiMarzo, who are also associated with the applicant. Andy Sumalides, a professional engineer with Land Tech. Ulysses Dioka and Luce Delmar, Luce Rosato, who are architects with Lissard Design. Tom Carmen, landscape architect with Malillo Bauer Carmen, and of course Greg Del Rio, a traffic engineer with Hardisty and Hanover. Just by way of background, the site plan application for this project was filed in May. Neighbors were notified of the filing in early June, and the certificate of mailing was delivered and is part of the P and Z file. Neighbors were notified of the public hearing that was to commence on August sixth on July twentieth by certified mail return receipt requested, and a packet has been delivered to staff evidencing the notice of tonight's hearing and the continuation of the hearing to all neighbors abutting across the street. To date, I've received just one inquiry, and that was from council representing the individuals who run and operate the art space across the street, and their inquiry dealt with the use of the city-owned properties where the parking lot is located directly south of the subject property. And as you know, that those city-owned properties and those parking lots are not part of this application. As I mentioned, the project was presented to you in depth on July fifth, so we will keep our presentations tight and succinct. But of course, we're happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification you might need. The project property is located at three seventy, three ninety-four, and two Maple Street. It's located in the central business district. The lot size in total is approximately two point three acres. The existing conditions, as you know, are the former YMCA building, which is about fifty-eight thousand square feet. On the corner, there's a historic structure that dates to around eighteen ninety-one that had been used by the YMCA and other uses over the years. There are also two other multifamily structures that front on Maple Street. The proposal is to demolish all of those structures and redevelop the site with a new mixed-use structure containing two hundred four apartments. First floor, restaurant space at the corner with an activated corner space. Thirty-seven studio, one hundred one bedroom, and sixty-seven two-bedroom units. There will be twenty affordable units plus a contribution to the affordability fund. Two hundred seventy parking spaces are proposed with two sixty-one required. There's twenty thousand four hundred square feet of recreation area that would be required, and we're proposing, excuse me, proposing more than thirty-three thousand square feet. As I mentioned, first floor restaurant space plus additional amenity space for tenants. EV charging stations will be situated in the parking structure in accordance with state statute. And that's really just a general overview, Luce, and Andy Sumalides and others will go into a little bit more detail in a couple of minutes. All SEAC agencies, with the exception of transportation, mobility, and parking, have sent their sign-offs. We did have back and forth comments from many of them. Plans were revised and we responded to their comments over the past several weeks, so those sign-offs from WPCA, DPW, Fire, Health, and the First District Water Department are all in the file. TMP and redevelopment, the only agency that have not submitted their sign-offs. The redevelopment agency undertook peer review. That peer review was concluded, and it determined that the project met the design guidelines and the redevelopment agency regulations and the design guidelines for the West Avenue corridor. The transportation, mobility, and parking just this evening at four forty-five sent to Mr. Kleppen and to us their statement, and in, for the most part, they've concluded that the revisions that we've made and the additional information, plans, and analyses are sufficient. We conducted a site visit with TMP and redevelopment approximately two weeks ago, and that TMP memo is an outgrowth of not only those meetings, but revisions to the plans that were presented to those agencies as a result of that meeting. And of the twenty comments in the DP, excuse me, in the TMP memo of July nineteenth, which many of you I suspect have read, the applicant has revised the plans and provided info on eighteen of those twenty. We disagree on two comments, one of which is the necessity of a, of a crosswalk at an additional crosswalk across West Avenue at the intersection of Butler. But there's been some additional commentary from TMP tonight, and we would accept the proposed condition on this issue that TMP has suggested, and certainly Andy or Luce can get into that in just a couple of minutes. And all of the standards we believe have been met for site plan review, and we'll chat about those just before you close your hearing. And at this point, I would then like to turn this over to Andy Sumalides, who can walk you through the site plan, share with you some of the changes from the site plan you may have seen and remember from July. And that will be followed by Luce, then Tom, and then Greg Del Rio. If you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, but knowing that you have a lengthy agenda, perhaps it'd be better for Andy just to walk you through the site plan and move forward.
Liz, at the last hearing, I asked where the locations for the affordable units were going to be. Do you have an answer for that this evening?
Yes, Mr. Schumann, we did provide in our first submission, locations of workforce housing, the workforce housing, the twenty units, and that plan has been revised to more, to disperse them more freely, for lack of a better word, in the building, and Luce Rosado will show you that plan and identify where those units are now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Andy?
Good evening, Andy Sumalides, a principal with Land Tech and professional engineer. I'm just going to share my screen, screen here. There we go. Just to get you guys oriented, this is in yellow here is the, the boundaries of all three properties. Here is that former YMCA building. It is north is to the right corner of the property here. Route seven connector to the north or the west, I should say, here. To the east is West Ave. To the south here, you have the off-ramp to ninety-five. Lockwood Matthews Mansion, the pinnacle that's currently under construction, and the waypoint that was also recently constructed in the last several years. Here's a little closer look at our existing conditions on the property. In blue here, you'll see those are the three parcels. Three seventy is the larger parcel. On the corner here, you have three ninety-four West Ave. And then a little parcel here of two Maple. If this were to be approved, we would obviously combine these lots into one. In yellow here, you see the North River Valley Trail system that's on state property. So the south here is two city-owned parcels. And in green here, and we'll get into this a little bit later, are two state-owned parcels. Again, Maple Street is here on the north, West Ave on the east, the Route seven connector here on the west. Under proposed conditions, as you heard earlier, it's to demolish all structures on the property and build a new multi-mixed-use development. And you'll hear more about the details of that, so I won't bore you with them. They have prettier pictures. But essentially, we would I'll just go through most of the major items as you guys, from the last time you guys saw them, and really working with TMP, and most of these are just off-site improvements. The buildings, obviously serviced by city sewer and water and all public utilities for stormwater improvements. There's currently none on the site. There's catch basins and piping, and they all just connect into the city's infrastructure. We would be adding underground detention system in this area as well as a hydrodynamic separator, which is basically a manhole structure with a swirl chamber to remove sediments and hydrocarbons and gases and oils and the such. So a huge improvement from a stormwater perspective. Now to the off-site improvements. What we've done working with TMP, P and Z redevelopment, and DPW was add on-street parking elements, both on West Ave and Maple Street. As Attorney Sachi mentioned, we did have twenty comments from TMP, eighteen of which were concurred with. Most of those had to do with turning movements, sightlines, some clarity, no major changes. The biggest change was adding this onsite parking, really, you know, coordinating, I would say, our street trees, our street lighting, all those amenities as well. One of the other big changes was the bus stop currently exists here. The one comment was to relocate that bus stop to the northeast corner. So that was done. You'll see a bunch of striping and improvements that the town, or the city is looking to undertake, which is essentially adding some bike lanes to the existing corridor here along West Ave and really extending those that currently exist further down. We have added bike amenities here to support the, you know, the River Valley Trail, the Norwalk Valley Trail, as well as support, you know, park bike access along West Ave corridor. So those were the two major changes, I would say, or the few major changes. One thing I want to point out, and I think we'll get into it, is there's a couple utility poles along Maple Street that were being asked to be buried underground. Originally, the thought was to bury all the utilities along Maple Street. We had a site meeting with TMP, redevelopment, DPW, planning and zoning, Eversource, to look at the feasibility of burying all this electrical infrastructure. Part of the reasoning was to bury the infrastructure was to get the on-street parking. We were still able to get the on-street parking while still leaving all the poles intact. There's really two poles in question right now. I think that planning and zoning would still, staff would still love us to There's really two poles in question right now. I think that planning and zoning would still staff would still love us to bury. The issue is, we're still working with the communications companies, both Frontier and Optimum have infrastructure on those lines as well. We are pursuing that um and TMP is on um also helping us in that pursuit. We just don't have an answer how feasible that is. Um EverSource seems feasible from their perspective. Um they still need to do some design work on their end. So we're really working back and forth with the utility companies and we won't have an answer and and I don't know when we'll have an answer um on how feasible it is to bury those two. And by feasible, I mean timeline and cost really on on getting that infrastructure buried. Um so we're working with them and we're diligent in doing so and will continue to do so and and continue working with the city, specifically TMP, to get that done. Um so that's one of the the issues I would say are one of the concerns.
Do they have any impact to the width of the sidewalk and accessibility there?
They don't. So the curb line that currently exists today would remain. And then the parking actually encroaches and you can see here, I'll zoom in on it. The center line moves slightly, so this is an extra wide corridor here along Maple Street, so there's room to get the on-street parking within the existing travelway. And one of the also improvements would be to connect the the bike trail here and actually this would be a little bit of a speed hump. So the idea is to to slow down traffic through this corridor. Um and again, working with TMP to slow down the traffic, make this more pedestrian friendly, bike friendly and the such. Um and we think by 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 reducing the width and adding this amenity here for the bike trail would would, you know, encourage slower movement of traffic through that.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yep. Um so I I think that the utility poles really becomes a an aesthetic function. Currently, uh you know, to remove these two poles. And and I think we can get the the wider sidewalk. Um the on-street parking and everything else to work with that. The the TMP um two, I guess, issues I would say is is really this crosswalk here. Um there's currently an existing crosswalk that gets you to this leg of Butler. And what conversation with TMP was really to add another crosswalk here to get you to here, which we feel isn't necessary. Um somebody who's walking along here could easily walk another twenty feet to get across the street. Um there's also at both these intersections, you know, legs on each corner. So this is really a mid-block, I would say, crosswalk that currently exists, and it would just seem silly to add another leg here to crush it to this corner. Um so we're working with TMP and and you could see if you had a chance to review their comments that they'll they'll work internally on resolving that and we're, you know, we're amenable to working with them. Um one suggestion I think we can make to them is we this could honestly become a triangle um or something like of that nature and not have to add another crosswalk signal there. The other item for TMP was um this the southern parking lot here. It's city owned. It's not in our control. We don't have um full detailed survey of this parcel, honestly, because it wasn't one of our parcels under development. And the access here, as you can see, the part of the driveway actually encroached onto our property. So what we did here was reconfigure this island here, which would allow access. And then TMP wanted to know, you know, what else would need to happen in order to improve that lot. So we showed, you know, the relocation of the islands. They wanted to get an idea of, you know, how much parking are they losing and what's what's gonna happen here because some of this encroaches onto our property. So we did this plan just to show conceptually what could happen here. And then one of their comments was, you know, they want further drainage or further development of that lot, so we're we're not looking to redevelop that lot for the city. Um we were just looking conceptually what that looked like and that's what we showed. So I think that's where we landed on it. And, you know, uh that that's, I guess, the extent of that. They were wondering what drainage impacts and, you know, we don't have topography and all the drainage infrastructure there, so it takes some effort to to do some more work there for the city to redevelop that lot. But I think there's still minimal access to get to the lot, um but maybe some reconfiguration of that landscaped island can get access um and continue using that lot. Um and I think the last comment I want to make is this parcel here, which is state owned, that you could see here um with the dots on it is it's under the state's control. Um we have not had any conversations yet with the state. I think TMP is gonna help facilitate some of those conversations, but as you can see, some of this is existing parking that was used for the Y. Um so if we saw cut this here and do our development, what is this gonna look like? Obviously, we don't want that there either. So you could see this note here is to remove the asphalt and place with lawn and coordinate with Connecticut DOT to get that done. Um I think TMP was was amenable to that. Um so that's what we are proposing to do. We'll work with the city, the state to, you know, remove that asphalt. Obviously, we don't want that asphalt either. We replace it with lawn. There's no real good access to that site. Because it's it's kind of landlocked, so there's no real way to get to it or or do much more with it. So we're looking just to just to replace it with some landscaping. I think that's it for me on my side and I'm just gonna pass it over to to Luz to go through some of the architecture, unless you have any questions at this point.
Uh no, no question for you, but uh uh comment to the to the group in general. One of our uh members, Tammy, has uh just uh joined us. Um and uh as a result, I am going to have to unseat uh Chapin for this um uh hearing and uh Anna will be seated. And for the second public hearing, uh we'll seat Chapin and uh Anna will be unseated. Uh I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. If I may just interject and add something uh on one of the topics that Andy discussed. The issue of burying the utilities on Maple Street. Uh my client in Randy Salvatore is the principal in three seventy West and he was on tonight. The the concern is that uh it would become infeasible, both from an economic perspective and a logistical perspective. And also now we're finding perhaps a timing perspective. So we're asking the commission to consider uh allowing us the flexibility to do what we can and diligently pursue that option. But in the event that we can't uh be given the opportunity to come back to you and or come to staff and say it just isn't feasible or it's taking far too much time or it's um it's going to be cost prohibitive. So if you would be considerate of that modification to a condition that was in the draft resolution, that would be very helpful moving forward. I just wanted to just put that out there. So at this point, Luz, could you um make your presentation?
Okay. Hi, uh my name is Luz Rosado. Um and I'm architect with Lizard Design. And uh I'm gonna start with um if you can see my screen right now, I'm showing the floor plans. I assume you can see my screen?
Yes, we can see the screen.
Um the the first question, Mr. Sherman, that you had about the um workforce housing locations. Um that was one of the comments we received that they they were uh that we needed to be more dis- distributed in the floor plan um that we have before. Uh since then, we went ahead and updated the floor plans and you can see that by uh the location of the red dots in the floor plans. I'll zoom in so you can see better. Um I'm starting with the upper residential floor plans. Um and you can see the center is is this the courtyard. Um this is the first uh residential floor facing the courtyard and you can see the red dots location. Um this is the upper levels. There was two floors that that look identical and you can see the locations that they are. We have some with exposure to the courtyard. We have some with exposure to um uh West Avenue um and all different sides of the building. Um in addition to this, we also included um a workforce housing at the ground floor um where we have the two-story units. Um you can see here uh on Maple Street. Um so it's there and they're not only distributed in the floor plan in the building, but they're also distributed amongst the various unit types that we have. Um so that that it's in response to that comment. Um another um another comment in terms of uh architecture that we received from TMP uh was related to parking and handicap accessible spaces. Um we and I'll change to the ground floor plan, parking garage. Um in the original uh submission, um initial submission, we had a total of six uh handicap spaces. Um because we have a restaurant use and a and a residential use, we needed to calculate those separately. And that resulted in the addition of two handicap spaces more needed for a total of eight. Uh so we went ahead and updated the floor plans to uh include two additional handicap spaces. Um which we located um one in each floor and I and I show it my hand here. Uh conveniently look conveniently located close to the elevators. One in each floor, here and here. And so that and that was part of the response letters that we provided. Um another thing that uh I wanted to point out regarding the garage is that we do, as uh Liz mentioned, have ten percent um electric vehicle parking station uh infrastructure as required by the state uh by state law. Um and that is also distributed um on the floor plan. Uh we have two levels of parking garage, so we have um a percentage in the in in each level of the parking. Um and those are noted with the letters EB on on the floor plans. Um another uh comment since since we met with you guys, um another comment that we received, it was a clarification of how trash uh collection and logistics were going to operate in the building. Um and we responded and clarified that um in our response comments that um all the trash collection is gonna happen internal to the buildings. We we are providing uh trash room on on each floor or all units will have accessibility to a trash area. Um and that all is gonna be uh compacted in in the building and stored in the building until the time of collection. Um so that was clarified. And um th- those really in 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 a summary were the comments we received as related to the interior of the building and the architecture. Now, if you remember back in July, uh early July, we did a thorough presentation of the architectural character. Um we had a peer review which deemed that that our our design, it's uh compatible with the design guidelines. Um and you can see the upper elevation. Um what we tried to do with the architecture character is to just just make sure we articulate the building uh on the various uh on the various facade, just to get get uh more smaller scale, doesn't feel like large areas. Um and that goes in line with the design guidelines, where we have segments of the building. Um and uh we also providing the various setbacks um that also help with the massing and the scale of the building is to have a more um thoughtful design uh for the pedestrian. Um we are providing a two-tier step. The upper level is step back from the front of the building, a minimum of ten feet. Um but we are also providing a step back at the uh first, the second floor here above the amenities. Um at the corner, um where we have the restaurant area, uh we are activating that with uh just having uh different material just to make it unique at the corner um with the with the use of the ground floor that's retail. And uh along the main facade, we have our amenities area with uh the large areas of placing. But in addition to that, we have the two-story units with have the residential. Um it changes the residential style of the architecture. And um I think uh it this elevation here on the top, it's uh West Avenue. And the one in the bottom, it's on Maple Street. Where you can see uh we have wrapped the building with the same design at the corner um to make it unique um at the corner and then continue with the two-story units along the way. And uh if you have any questions, um I I'll be happy to answer um regarding the architecture. And if not, I can pass it to um Tom Carmen, the landscape architect, which is gonna describe the landscape design.
Well, thank you, Luz. Maybe uh I will start sharing my screen then.
Did I stop sharing?
No, you're still uh sharing.
I'm trying to find the control or to stop sharing. And it's not working. Okay.
There we go. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh my name is uh Tom Carmen, uh principal with the firm Malillo Bauer Carmen, and we are landscape architects. Uh this evening, what I will do is give you an overview of the streetscape uh as well as the uh the site lighting. So this is a uh this is the L one drawing and essentially what we have done, you heard um from Andy, a civil engineer, related to the various adjustments that were made to the curb lines. And so we just followed suit and we then adjusted the landscape and lighting to coordinate with the various parallel parking spaces and any of the adjustments to the uh the curb alignment. Additionally, what we did in doing so, we modified uh the tree planting pit detail uh to be consistent with the uh the the waypoint as well as the currently under construction pinnacle. So that way, those um paver treatments are all consistent and uh will match. It will include the two-foot uh band along the curb um for that that snow um shelf. And then um at the the restaurant area where we have the public realm at the intersection of Maple and Orchard Street. We've got um decorative pavement there with uh some bench seating, planters, planters that would be maintained by uh the owner throughout the year. Um trash receptacles, bike racks are proposed there, and then that's the location that we have relocated the bike, uh the bus stop. Where the bus stop previously was, we still have some decorative pavement shown there. Um that's directly across uh from the arts, uh the Norwalk Arts space. And then additionally, on the west side, we have um a decorative pavement area as well that has some bench seating. This also serves for EverSource to gain access back to the Transformers. And then you'll see that we did expand the sidewalk and the paving treatment as requested offsite to uh to meet up with the uh the trail. Mr. Carmen, um why don't the uh uh street uh trees on West Avenue uh continue across the entire facade of the building? Where the uh where the parking spaces are, we um we have a seven-foot sidewalk um in that location and we did not want to introduce um trees that would create a pinch point for pedestrians within that zone. I see. Thank you. The um the next area that I will, I'll go The, um, the next area that I will, I'll go to drawing L one point one. And this shows the lighting plan. So along West Ave, uh, maintaining the existing um, light fixtures that exist over there. There are, um, there's one fixture that we do have to relocate to accommodate those parallel parking spaces. And those fixtures match the existing along West Ave. Now, up along Maple, we're utilizing the, um, the waypoint style fixture that as one would travel along Maple and then cross to Orchard, along Orchard. Those, um, fixtures are utilized in that, um, along that stretch. So we're matching that along there. And then moving to the last two areas would be up on the amenity deck space. Um, this is the two stories up from the, uh, essentially on the top level of the parking garage. We have an amenity space that's consistent with what, um, we'd previously presented. And then a rooftop space shown on drawing L three, which is all the way on top of the residential units themselves. The only thing that I'd like to mention about these two spaces are that we did modify, um, two of the light fixtures. Uh, when we previously presented, we were asked to confirm that all the fixtures within these areas are dark sky compliant. And we looked back at it and there were two that, um, did not fully comply with that. So we have made that revision. And that provides an overview of the, uh, the landscape and lighting improvements for the site.
Um, I just have a comment about your, your street level, um, diagram. You have, um, um, on the other side of West Avenue, you have the street label as even Allen Highway Route Seven. That is actually Connecticut Avenue Route One.
Oh, interesting. Thank you for clarifying that. I apologize for that.
I have a question for Luz. Um, can you tell us again about your, the solar panels?
Um, for the, the, from a landscape perspective, we just have, um, solar charging stations on the, um, the amenity deck level and on the rooftop level. We do not have, um, solar panels, uh, for the building itself.
So it's just for plugging in your cell phone?
That's correct. That is what we're proposing there.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the, uh, screen that you have pulled up here, um, we were talking about the street trees, uh, earlier along West Avenue and, uh, the conflict with the, um, on-street parking spots. Is there room for one tree between the, um, public realm space where the bus stop used to be located? And the, uh, the first, uh, or maybe last, depending on your perspective, uh, um, street parking spot?
So the, the reason we did not put a tree right there is that there is an existing, uh, street light that is located right there. And we felt that the, uh, that doing a shade tree in that location would be too tight to that existing light.
Um, Mr. Cameron, this is Tammy. Um, thanks for the presentation. Uh, the public amenity space up at the corner of Maple and West for a building of this size, um, seems awfully small. I know you're not going to shrink the building, but, uh, what is the material there? And what if, you know, 10 or 15% of the people that live in this building have dogs? And, uh, they need to water those dogs. Where do they go?
Um, the, 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 the material first of this, um, this public realm space is a paver, um, same kind of paver treatment that we see directly across the street on Maple, um, and diagonally on, uh, West Ave. So it would be that same, uh, style pavement. In terms of, uh, where the dogs, um, would go, I would imagine that residents would, um, probably take their dogs for a walk along the, uh, along the trail.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing else for pet amenities in this building. I don't think there is an, um, waypoint or the pinnacle either, but I think it's something we as a commission might want to think about with all these people. If there are a lot of pets there and a lot of hardscape, it's not a good combination.
I do believe that there is some sort of pet amenity at the waypoint. Since they have two buildings, I believe one of them does have a small green space for dogs.
Correct.
I, I'm just, I, I don't know that for certain, but I, I think I heard something like that at one point. But just the same, it's a good question because that area would be just for those buildings, for residents in those buildings. So what's going to be for the residents in this building?
Right. And on the, the Berkeley, I think it is, that has the condo loft style units on, uh, is it Berkeley Street, the one that runs perpendicular to Maple? And I see everybody leaving this building and going, there are little grassy spaces in front of those units. And I see people from this building going and using those for their pets, um, which might not be the nicest thing, but anyway.
If I may just interject for a minute, um, I was involved with the waypoint project and there was a dog park. And frankly, after a short amount of time, the dog park became more of a nuisance than anything else for a variety of reasons. Uh, not the least of which was, uh, maintenance of it from dog excrement. But keep in mind, just across, uh, just across West Avenue, a block and a half away is Lockwood Matthews Park. And it's certainly a nice open space and there's areas that folks could walk their dogs. And there is the Norwalk River Valley Trail that is accessible from this site along the western, the, the western property end. Just something.
Right. And thank, thank you for that clarification because it was, uh, many years ago that I did hear about that. So thank you for bringing me up to date that no longer exists.
Sure. I, I don't know if it doesn't exist any longer. I know it was becoming problematic. And in addition, that is Route Seven on the west side. It's elevated. Um, that's the elevated section of Route Seven.
Oh, okay. The superhighway. Okay. The elevated portion of it.
Exactly.
Was the Connecticut Avenue that, like, under the underpass is.
That's further to the, that's further to the south on, next to the city-owned property.
Got it. Thanks again.
Sure.
Anyone has any other questions for Tom? Um, if not, then we'd like to just turn it over at the final instance to Greg for him to walk you through the traffic analysis and any responses that he deems appropriate to share with you that emerged from T M P's, um, evaluation.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you all.
Good evening all. Um, for the record, Greg Del Rio, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Uh, director of traffic engineering for Horsie and Hanover. Um, and I'm going to screen the screen here. Okay, um, so the, the study area, here's the, the, the site on, on Maple, fronting Maple and West. Uh, conducted inventory and traffic counts along Maple Street, West Avenue, um, Ben Buran Avenue One and, and up to Stevens Street. Uh, traffic counts were conducted in March of 2023, uh, during the peak hours, the morning, the evening and, and Saturdays. I'm just using the morning to illustrate the, the traffic counts that were conducted, including pedestrian and bicycle movements across the intersections. In addition to the existing counts, uh, we projected out to the, to the build year, uh, time of completion for, for the project, uh, of which, uh, other, um, projects, uh, development projects would come online. And we accounted for the, the background traffic that those developments would, would, um, generate. Uh, so, uh, a general office building at Six Butler Street, uh, which where there, there was no, um, previous, um, traffic study or data. So we conducted our own trip generation for that development. Uh, and then all the other developments were based on existing traffic studies such as the Pinnacle, uh, Norwalk Hospital, uh, a small, small development of, uh, some residential houses on, on Berkeley, which was included in the background growth. And then the, the mentioned, uh, general office building on, on Six Butler. So all of that was included in addition to the background growth traffic. Uh, as far as our project goes, uh, the 204 dwelling units and the high turnover, uh, sit-down restaurant uh, was accounted for, uh, the lower right, and I'll zoom in a little bit. Can't see that. Hold on. There we go. Uh, the bottom line just shows that, you know, roughly about a hundred to 115 or so trips, depending on the peak hour, morning, the evening and the Saturday peak, afternoon peak. Those trips were generated, uh, were distributed onto the network. And then the analysis was conducted. This just shows the build volumes for each, you know, for, for the morning as an example. Again, it was done for the, the evening peak and Saturday. And then we have our analysis results, um, comparing the no build to the build condition with the project. Um, and as you can see, there was, uh, no impacts except for, um, just, these aren't impacts, these are just changes in levels of service. If you're a level of service D or less, it's acceptable operations where really no mitigation or, um, yeah, any changes to the infrastructure, the number of lanes, the type of lanes or signal operations is required. So it, it all kind of, you know, in, in short terms, it all fits under existing conditions with existing roadway and network, um, which was accounted for. Um, and, you know, there's very brief, quick overview on, on the traffic issues. Uh, we also did a sensitivity, um, for the proposed design on West Street and worked together with T M P to illustrate that, um, the traffic works with that, with the, with the bikeway and the proposed reconfiguration on, on West Street as well. That concludes the traffic part. If there's any questions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if anyone has any questions of whether it's Luz or Andy, Tom or Greg, we're happy to answer them. If not, uh, we look forward to comments from the public. We would like to just, uh, reserve some time at the end for final comments. And possibly if, um, Mr. Salvatore may want to address the commission.
Okay, uh, that's fine. And, uh, as the commission members know, uh, once the public has had an opportunity to speak, uh, commission members will also have an opportunity to ask any further questions uh, of the developer that they, uh, wish to. Uh, with that, uh, Brian, uh, can I ask you to explain uh, how members of the public can, uh, access the hearing?
There. So for any members of the public, if you'd like to, uh, speak on behalf of this application, uh, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You click that once, and if you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. Like that, I'll start calling some people over. Uh, first is Rich Bonifant.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, um, first off, thanks for Richard Bonifant, 17 Park Hill Avenue, for the record. Uh, I want to give, uh, Ms. Langgallis, uh, a thank you for bringing up a huge issue i- in, uh, Norwalk here about the dog walking areas. That was my concern is like, where are you going to walk your dogs if you don't provide a space within the project? And you guys just said it like, that's okay, just use the trail. And then, then I'm hearing like, uh, Attorney Suchi saying like, just use Matthews Park? That's, that's, that's an irresponsible answer because Matthews Park is not a dog park. And I got little, uh, grandkids and we like to run over in, in that, um, Devon's Place Playground over there. And I'd like to have the kids run around the back of Matthews Park on the lawn. But I see people like with their dogs, they don't pick up after them and, and, and they're ruining the parks, right? So to tell people like, just, just use the parks that are not do- dog allowed to, to just go ahead is irresponsible, right? Um, another point is that parking for the Heritage Wall was part of an agreement when the city sold some of the land, a piece of that land to the hospital. And, and the agreement was that if there was an event at the Heritage Wall, that this, that um, people who were going to an event could use that parking. And I hope that transferred, oh, to the next owner when, when they turned around and sold it. Um, the on-street parking thing about Maple Street, and I think you're, that's a huge sacrifice in public safety because ambulance has got to fly up that street. The hospital is right there and you guys know it, right? You want to narrow it and get the ambulance all boxed up because they can't, somebody's there, parallel parking, trying to get stuck going backwards while the ambulance is trying to get around them and there's no room. So that's a huge public safety issue, right? Um, and, uh, a minor point is that, yeah, trees are great until they block the sightline. And just my own personal comment is that this is a perfect example of why we ought to start eliminating the enterprise zone, but that's neither here nor there in this department. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Paul Shinard.
Um, I would like to thank everyone for hearing me today. Paul Shinard, Windsor Place, Norwalk. Um, I like to say this is, um, a great project. I really, um, like seeing all the architectural design that's going there. It's going to really plug up a hole that's just in nothing going on for a long time right there at West Street at the old Y M C A, um, lot. So it's going to bring a really good streetscape. I'm really enjoying all the different, um, uh, elements in there, the setbacks, the, the design elements is really, it's very beautiful in my opinion. Um, I also like how, um, it's also going to provide on-street parking for those who might not have as much mobility. So they'll, they'll get out of their vehicles and head on to the restaurant or visit people that might be living at this, um, location. And I also like to see the additional bike and pedestrian amenities that are going on. So I, you have my full, um, my full applause on this project and I hope it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. Uh, if you're dialing on a phone, you could hit star nine. Here's to be it, Mr. Schulman.
Um, okay, uh, then we'll turn it back to, uh, uh, Attorney Suchi.
Well, thank you, Mr. Schulman. I'd just like to make a few comments in response to Mr. Bonfons', um, commentary. And I appreciate his thoughtfulness. Um, the idea of walking someone's dog at Lockwood Matthews Mansion Park, well, of course, it's only possible if dogs are allowed to be walked there, and I suspect they are. And on a leash, we didn't say that they would be running free. But either that or the Norwalk River Valley Trail, if whatever restrictions apply, would absolutely have to be abided by. Perhaps for pet areas or dog runs or similar types of amenities for residents with, with, uh, pets, this might be something you want to consider to include in your zoning rewrite. But right now, there's no requirement under site plan review to provide access to facilities for someone's pets. Um, the Heritage Wall parking, I believe Mr. Bonifant is talking about parking in the two city-owned lots and not on the lot owned by the Y M C A or then the hospital. And as you know, the two city-owned lots are not part of this application, but for the, uh, small changes to the lot occasioned by changes to accommodate the appropriate access point adjacent to our property, those lots will remain as is. Um, as far as Maple Street parking is concerned and on-street parking there and the speed bump, those were suggestions by the Transportation, Mobility and Parking Department. That was not something that we had suggested all along. That was something that T M P, uh, requested us to consider and we've implemented it at their request. Um, and, uh, I think that's, that's really about it with respect to Mr. Bonifant. I would like the com- commission just to, if I could for just a minute, I want to just remind you of the four areas of concern. You've been very patient and very, uh, considerate of our requests and of our, of your time tonight. But the four areas that are just of concern that we'd like you to give, um, additional attention when you deliberate and when you address your conditions of approval. One is the pocket park. We don't own it. We've tried to discuss this with estate D O T. And we believe that it's a rather cumbersome and lengthy process to get anywhere, to get a pocket park created there. We've suggested making it a grassy area and if the city has the opportunity to deal with D O T, when we certainly would support that. But I don't think it's something that should be, um, an obligation on our port, on our part tied to, tied to any approval that you might consider. Access to the city-owned lot, that will not be changed. Uh, we've made some provisions to make it, um, accessible by virtue of the changes to the entrance off West Avenue. And we would certainly accept the T M P suggestion that this matter be further discussed with and reviewed by D P W as it relates to. as it relates to drainage. That would be within their purview and we certainly would be willing to continue those discussions with DPW if necessary. DPW has seen this plan and we haven't received any comments that they have any issues with the changes to the entrance or the landscape islands or the elimination of a few parking spaces. I think Andy was more than thorough with respect to the crosswalk consideration. And we don't think it's necessary. And just by way of comparison, the T intersection at Butler and West is identical to the T intersections at Merwin and West and Arch Street and West. And those two other T intersections north of the site only have two crosswalks, one across West Avenue and then one crossing Meadow, Merwin Street and another crossing Arch Street. So again, we don't really think that it's necessary to add yet another crosswalk when there are certainly sufficient numbers within walking distance. And the last, most important one relates to the underground utilities. And I think both Andy and I have already addressed that. I asked that you give that thoughtful consideration in light of the significance of this project and the attention that's been paid to so many other aspects of it. I don't know, Randy, if you have anything you'd like to add at this point. I would just like to conclude after Randy speaks to just address the seven areas of standards of review very, very briefly. Randy?
Sure. Thank you, Liz, and thank you all. Really, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to develop here. We're really excited about the opportunity. We're, I'm the owner of RMS Companies and we've developed throughout the state of Connecticut into New Jersey and in Westchester and in Norwalk. We developed, I guess about, time goes by, but about fifteen years ago, we developed a condominium building on Isaac Street. We also developed the Catherine Gibbs site on East Avenue. And we still own and operate and developed about ten years ago Hotels Zero Degrees on Main Avenue. And we're just going to be getting ready to do a big wholesale renovation of that and renaming it as the Watershed just to express the fact that we're doing a, a major renovation there and that has Sienna Restaurant there. So we're excited to, again, to have the opportunity here and, and look forward to the prospect of working with you all for many years to come.
Well, thank you, Randy. Just to conclude, as you know, there are seven standards of review under site plan review. And you are obligated to apply those standards and only those standards when you deliberate and make your decision on the application before you. One is stable traffic flow. And we, I think that Greg and his report clearly demonstrate that the levels of service will be those that are acceptable to the commission with this structure and the uses that are proposed. Off-street parking and loading, the development has more than enough off-street parking and loading for the uses. And we've also created another eleven plus or minus spaces both on West Avenue and Maple Street to accommodate additional needs. Landscaping and screening, major trees and significant landscape features are proposed for this site. There's, there is some degree of a, a lack of landscaping right now, but I think the landscaping plan by Tom Carmen is thoughtful and meets the requirements of section one eighteen. Excuse me, it meets the landscaping screening requirement set forth in the standards review. Tom also has identified that elimination, it meets the dark sky requirements and is, but yet is sufficient to provide safe and safe illumination for residents and for pedestrians alike. We've already discussed utilities cited served by all utilities and that one issue. We ask that you give us the indulgence of working with us and giving us some flexibility on the underground bearing of utilities. Impact on adjacent property, we don't believe there will be any impact on adjacent or other properties either owned by the city of Norwalk or the state of Connecticut or those across the street. Rather, the proposal will result in a substantial improvement to West Avenue with a thoughtfully designed structure that is a gateway to this downtown parcel, which has been vacant and underutilized for many years. And lastly, the last condition of approval that you're obligated to consider is are there any zoning violations on the property? And there are none. So that concludes our presentation to you. We are certainly happy to answer any other questions. If there is a question or some deliberation about conditions, if there is a way that we could be included in that discussion, we would appreciate it. Because as you know, once you close the hearing, we're not able to respond to you or give you any insight or input on any aspect of this application. So thank you very much for your time this evening and for your time back in Ju- in July. We look forward to your action, hopefully this evening as well. Thank you.
Any final questions for Attorney Sachi or any of the consultants? All right, then we will close the hearing and we'll move on to action. Thank you all. Can we bring up the resolution, please?
Do you need that any larger or is that, is that okay?
I've already got a headache. It doesn't make a difference to me. I can read it.
Let me know if you want me to scroll it all or I can leave it, leave it where it is for now.
I think you can scroll it up some.
I would point out that condition number ten addresses the conversation related to that triangular piece of property at the back. It's the city's intention to try to reach out to DOT to see if we can somehow gain control over that property or at least have the ability to access it for improvement and the, the kind of condition states that if that occurs prior to the C O for the property, that the applicant would work with us on getting that improvement made.
And Steve, the requirement regarding the underground utilities, where is that? How far down?
That, that is condition number seventeen and I would recommend leaving it as stated. Obviously, if, if there's something that occurs that makes the bearing any either pole infeasible for some, some reason, then you know, obviously the applicant has the right to come back and request that that condition be modified. But I, I would recommend for now leaving it as stated.
I would agree with that. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Would you like me to take the, take it down, Mr. Chairman?
Be- before we do that, can we just go back to the pocket part?
Sure.
Having trouble focusing on it. Where was that? Oh, ten.
Number ten.
So we're saying in this paragraph ten that it's not going to be a condition of approval that they do it, but they do agree to do it if the city gets them the right to do it. Am I reading that?
Right. So yeah, we're not going to hold up their project if they just can't obtain it. So that, and we're not asking them to obtain it if we're, we're, I think the, our, our thinking is we'll, we'll undertake the process of trying to secure the property in some fashion. If that's not possible, then obviously the applicant's off the hook. If we're able to do that before their C O, then we're asking them to make the improvements to that.
You know, it's interesting, you know, being around Norwalk as long as I've been here. I, I really feel like we're fortunate to have some of the developers with the pockets that they have, that they can start and finish a project unlike some I can think of on Wall Street. Mr. Salvatore gave us a, a little history of what he's done in Norwalk and, and, you know, I, I'm happy to have him here. I think he's going to do a great job on this. East Avenue is unbelievable. But anyway, this looks like it would work. I'm sure if he has the opportunity to put a park next to his building, he will.
Any other comments on the resolution?
I think you just need to update condition eleven, Steve. The date is a year off.
That any, oh, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I will correct that for the final version.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. Did someone else speak well, Brian?
Yeah, I, and I, I, I had a question too. I don't, I don't want to go out of turn. Who was before me?
I don't think there was anyone. I thi- I think you and Brian were speaking at the same time.
Okay. I just have a question. Can you just scroll down to the area that Richard was talking about? The, the section number seven, where is there? Number seven.
Workforce, workforce housing?
Yes.
Yes, no, I'm not interested.
Be restricted in perpetuity and meet all requirements of section one eighteen, one ten fifty workforce, workforce housing regulations. Okay, so these are for rent. These are rentals, not, not for purchase. And so when you say deed restricted, are you saying, are, are, is this another way to put it where it's? I'm sorry, I forget the, the term, the legal term. I, I, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, but it's, it's.
JJ, the rents, the rents will have to conform to the requirements for one eighteen, ten fifty. In other words, they will be substantially lower than the, the going, the market rate rents.
I think we're.
Perp- in perpetuity.
Right. And, and so I guess my question was, should this change hands? Is that what that means?
That still has.
It will, it will still stay the same.
Absolutely. That's true of every, every such project that we've approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And and then the, the number of workforce house apartments, was that agreed upon? If this, if this is two hundred units?
It's a ten percent.
Right.
Ten percent.
That is the.
There's a little bit of variation in there. Sometimes if they do like, if you did a three-bedroom unit, for example, you, that can count as two units within the regulations as a way to get, but I don't believe that was the case in this application.
Okay. Was there a way to get a little bit more out of this? I thought that there would, there was discussion in regards to adding some more units to this.
I think that was the Chestnut Street project.
Oh, yes. Okay.
All right. So we'll be discussing that next.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, JJ. Any other questions? All right, if not, did we have a motion to approve? I don't think we did. Can I have a motion to approve? Jay, okay, well, Hector and then JJ also had her hand up. I assume that's a second. Okay, any further discussion?
Yep. One, could I make a comment, please, Lou?
Sure.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I think that RMS has done a nice job with this project, but I would like to go on the record that I'm extremely disappointed that this parcel of land was not developed into something by Norwalk Hospital as was proposed to the planning commission. I believe it was about four years ago, forgive me, it might have been three, might have been five, where there was an opportunity to bring jobs to Norwalk rather than just housing. And that has, it's no fault of this applicant, but I just think that it should go on the record that Nu Vance or Nu Vance bought the Norwalk Hospital. And I guess that opportunity went out the window, but I think that's really disappointing, even though I think this project is nicely presented and executed.
Thanks, Tammy. Nick?
Yeah, I mean, similarly more for just the record of, I'm really grateful that we're looking at the sustainability components in the new regulations and hope we don't fall into a spot like this where someone can come in with the size of, of a, a development and not take sustainability serious. And so I feel very binded because of this site plan review and I'm glad we're looking at that because I sort of find the responses really just disappointing on, on all of that fronts.
Thanks, Nick. All right, we ready to vote on this? Let's do a roll call.
Certainly, I'll start with Mr. Pachus.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes, we need housing.
Ms. Tabacnik?
Yeah, she's not voting. Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
I abstain because I really, in good conscience, can't say yes to a project where there's answer to solar panels is plugins for your cell phone. I think that's really cynical. And we are in a climate emergency and I feel nothing is more important than sustainability at this point.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Okay. Passes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Appreciate it all.
Very much.
Thank you. Okay, it is only eight o'clock, but I think I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'm feeling a little lightheaded.
I owe a break.
Yeah, how about a, it's seven fifty-one. What if we come back together about eight oh five? Hector and Chapin are seated and of course can fully participate, just can't vote. Twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, S P Sono T O D two L L C. One dash eleven and fifteen to seventeen Chestnut Street and thirty Monroe Street, District Two, Block Fifty-Five. Lots four twenty-two and twenty-eight. Construction of a two hundred dwelling unit mixed-use development. Again, this is going to be a public hearing. So there may be people who were not on the earlier hearing. The way the hearing is conducted is that the developer or developer's representative will discuss the project. They can bring in other experts from their team to speak about the project. Throughout that process, commission, all commission members are welcome to ask questions. When the presentation is completed, we'll open it up to the public. At that point, Brian Baker will explain how the public can access the meeting. We ask that if you're a member of the public and you're speaking, you say everything you need to, although we ask that you do it as expeditiously as you can. Because you only have one opportunity to speak. And we simply ask that your comments be appropriate for polite company. When, and your, your, your comments are basically comments directed at the development itself, not at the commission members. Once all the public comments have been heard, the developer or the developer's representative will then have an opportunity to respond to those comments. And throughout that period, the commission members will again have an opportunity to ask any questions about the project that they wish to. After that process has been completed, we will close the hearing and the commission will move on to action. And I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Blank, uh who I believe represents uh the developer.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Schuman. Uh, Adam Blank, uh attorney for uh Sono TOD two LLC, which is the owner developer applicant on this project. Uh, I'm an attorney at Waffsy Rosen, um and I live here in Norwalk. Uh, the applicant is a Spinnaker uh affiliate, um and they owned a vacant land located at fifteen uh Chestnut Street, uh which is the, this is fifteen Chestnut, uh and a little bit more than that, which is the proposed development area. I'll talk about that in just a second. It's in the SSDD. Um, and as you know, this, our plan is to improve the property with a two hundred unit uh apartment building as well as make improvements to the uh east side of the uh Sono train station parking area, right? So here's the South Norwalk Train Station, and this is the I guess New Haven bound side or east side of the tracks. And the development is at fifteen Chestnut, but it also uh includes uh land that is currently owned by the city uh here is, which is some commuter parking on it. Um, and so as part of this plan, it's it's, I mean, it's a Spinnaker project, but in a sense, it's also a joint uh venture or joint project because it involves the Spinnaker purchasing land from the city uh in exchange for Spinnaker providing commuter parking as part of this uh development. And Spinnaker promising to build uh two, a minimum of two hundred units uh in order for the state of Connecticut to issue a six million dollar grant uh to the city of Norwalk. So the city gets six million bucks if there's two hundred units here. Um, and so uh so there's the cities involved, the states involved, and Spinnaker. Um, we've uh we provided notice of the application to uh neighbors for this and notice of the public hearing to neighbors. We've given the green cards to your staff. We've received sign offs from SNU, Fire Marshal, DPW. You've got an initial approval from WPCA and the Building Department. The project's in a redevelopment area, requires their sign off, um which uh we received earlier today. Um, we've received comments from Bob, and I know he's on the Zoom, and I'm gonna butcher it as I always do, but Bob Griswasser, Grab, Bob, Bob G. From DeCarlo and Dahl, who's the peer review architect, so he's the architect that you and the redevelopment agency retained to review uh the project. You'll hear from him uh tonight, I'm sure. Um, and I I expect that he will tell you that, uh which is what it's in his report, that he finds the project complies with your regulations and recommends approval of the project with various conditions. Um, since he issued that report, which was just a couple of days ago, we have met with him uh and we have uh agreed um to revise some of the plans to reflect the recommendations contained in Bob's reports. And those uh recommendations that we've not yet made to the plans, uh we do not oppose you ha- as a condition of approval requiring us to comply with his uh recommendations. Uh finally, the TMP Department and its uh peer had a, and you and you all had a peer traffic reviewer, Marissa Turalo of AKRF uh review the project. They had initial comments and questions um for a traffic engineer. We provided uh responses to those concerns. Uh, Ms. Turalo, um which again is, she's the peer review traffic engineer, again, that you hired. She's not our traffic reviewer. She uh has confirmed for your staff that we have addressed uh all of her concerns, and she has no problem at all with the project uh moving forward. Um, uh, we received, just at the start of this meeting tonight, we received some follow up. Uh, I will call it minor comment from TMP with respect to uh capacity and traffic flow within the parking garage. Um, and and again, we we've not received their formal sign off, and and we have no problem with uh condition of approval that we continue to work with TMP to obtain uh their sign off. Um, so I'm gonna give you another, a a little bit more of an overview on the project, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the team members uh here, and I I'll probably pull my screen back up in a minute, but we've got um Vincent Hines from Redness and Mead, uh who's the civil engineer, Colin Growth here of Beinfield Architecture, uh the art, one of the architects on the job, and he'll give you a presentation. Eric Rains, um the landscape architect, uh Greg Del Rio uh of Hardy Hanover, who you've already heard from once tonight, so he'll be exceptionally brief, so you don't get too annoyed with him uh uh on a second round. Um additionally, we've got Henry Conroy from Spinnaker. Um, he's on the Zoom. He's not going to present to you, but he can certainly answer any questions that you have uh that make him up that are really addressed to the owner. Um, so uh I'll actually go back to this overview. So I I mentioned it a a little bit, but so as part of this project, um we we are Spinnaker will be acquiring from the city. It's about forty-six thousand square feet of land, which is part of this train station parking area. Um, the and the this project abuts one chestnut or the platform, which is another uh which is the first phase in a multi-phase project by Spinnaker um that included the rehab of the eleven Chestnut Street, which is the Leroy Shirt Factory uh building. The platform was a hundred and twenty-two unit multifamily uh sort of and mixed use uh development. Uh, it was approved in two thousand and nineteen and is now fully constructed. And the second phase across the street and and um in Colin's presentation, he'll give you um some better photographs of the development in the three phases as a whole, but across the street, um there's ongoing construction by Spinnaker and in the sort of second phase uh of this project with this being the uh third phase. That that's at the twenty Monroe Street is the the one that's across the street right here. Um, the um in developing the the platform project, the eleven Chestnut was sort of fully uh rehabbed. Um, this building, it's um, it's a wonderful nineteen twenties era factory uh former factory listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's also actually specifically called out and listed in your most recent Plan of Conservation and Development. When the one chestnut development occurred, uh the there was no request for any kind of bonuses of density or changes to any of the zoning regulations or modifications based upon the preservation of the uh shirt factory building or the rehabilitation uh of that building. So um because we're gonna talk about the historic preservation reg in just a minute, but we have not used that in any way, shape or form for um one uh Chestnut Street and that development. Um, and and of course, as part of, although the building was rehabbed, there's no restrictions on uh if we, if the architects wanted to do further work on it and make it non sort of historical or wanted to tear it down, there's not a so a zoning restriction on that. There's a process, of course, but there's not a zoning restriction uh on that. So we came, we came in front of you all way back in May um uh to sort of kick this project off um with seeking a text amendment to your historic preservation regulation um that um that was uh passed. Um, and at May twenty-sixth, or was I guess it's effective date, um there was a new historic preservation in this um preservation reg. We 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 wanted it for two reasons. One, we wanted it because, as I mentioned previously, in order for this specific development to move forward um and for the city to get the money from the state, we need two hundred units at the site. And under the um the the density requirements for the zone, we couldn't quite get to two hundred under the reg without having the benefit of uh historic preservation bonus. So we are asking for a twenty-five percent bonus. Um, the the reg and you did adopt, of course, this historic preservation reg allows a thirty percent. We're not asking to max that out. Um, we're we're asking for twenty-five uh percent, which gets us to the two hundred units of housing. Additionally, as part of the development, we're taking, we're paying the city for the land, but we're also in exchange, we're not just, so we're not giving us the land, but we're paying, but we're also getting, we're agreeing to provide the city with sixty commuter spaces in our development. So those sort of public spaces, those sixty spaces are gonna take up a lot of room. Um, and so that what that effectively does is it bumps the building up a story, and it increases its height slightly um from what it would otherwise be without the need for those commuter spaces. So those sixty commuter spaces um require us to go uh up um to uh uh seven stories um and seventy-seven and a half feet, which is uh just over what's uh allowed without the historic preservation uh regulation bonus uh although it's a little bit gray because if this was considered commuter parking, that's falls under what's allowed for commuter parking. You're allowed eight stories. Um, and so is this commuter parking? Is it apartment? What 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 it what requires it to be seven stories? You could kind of debate. So we have asked for that to be as part of the historic preservation um bonus, but it it may not be necessary because commuter parking already allows um a higher height than what we are seeking and a higher number of stories than what we're seeking. So um the we've got two hundred units of housing proposed, about five thousand square feet of retail, a little over that, eighty-five hundred square feet of restaurant space, total of two hundred and ninety-five parking spaces, um which includes, again, the sixty commuter spaces, nineteen units will be workforce. Why isn't that twenty? Why isn't that ten percent? Well, one of the units is a three bedroom, and under your regulations, um you want to encourage three bedroom, the larger units, so by if you build a three bedroom unit, that counts as two, so that gets you to your ten percent um which is what's required under the regs. Um, the also, as part of the project, we'll we'll be agreeing to preserve the shirt factory building. That's part of the historic preservation reg. Um, and and a nice thing about it is that with this proposed development, which you'll see from the architect and the landscape architect, we're gonna create a a very nice um uh courtyard area in here that will give great views of the shirt factory building now that 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 don't currently uh exist. Um. So uh obviously, the preservation of that would be a cultural benefit to the city of Norwalk. Um, the required, the the project meets, and I think your zoning memo lays that out, meets all of the requirements of the SSDD. Um, it meets with with um Bob, the archi- your peer review architect's comments, uh it meets the design guidelines for the South Norwalk TOD redevelopment plan and meets your workforce housing requirements. Um, there's obviously significant landscaping and drainage improvements that you'll hear about shortly. Um, it's gonna be amply parked. We've got eighteen spaces more than what's required in addition to the sixty commuter spaces that will be created. Um, uh, a traffic report has been conducted. You'll hear from Mike Galanti on that. Um, and and it it will, I will admit, and if depending on how much time you spent with it, it's a little bit confusing, and I I'd like to say that that's not um uh Greg's fault or the applicant's fault. We we were tasked with giving you a, we were specifically asked to provide you with a a traffic report based on the existing roadway conditions as well as essentially a report with the, if Chestnut Street were to be one-way, um uh and who's it? Uh. Greg, what's the cross street there? It's a.
Yes. Henry Street.
Yeah, were to be two.
One way, one way between Monroe and and Concord.
Yeah, um, and and we were also tasked to assume into our volumes, um if the MLK lot were redeveloped, um which is not something you would typically um do. So so we, so it it's it's kind of hard to read through the report, but but under either of those scenarios that because the city's not sure how they want the street to to function, but under either the the project works, and again, Marissa, your peer reviewer uh uh has agreed with that uh as well, and and Greg can give you as much detail as you'd like uh with respect to the traffic in just a a moment. Um. So uh with the sort of moderately brief introductory words, I'm gonna turn it over to um uh Vince Hines, the civil uh engineer. Vince?
So uh for the record, Vincent Hines, uh licensed engineer with Redness and Mead, having offices in Stanford and Wildon. Uh, our office has provided the site engineering services for the development project. Uh, so I'd like to share my screen here. I believe you should see that now. Uh, what I want to start with is the is actually our grading plan. Uh, as I think that's relevant to go over some of the a- access points to the site. Uh, you know, we have three different levels of of garage access for the site based on the elevation difference between Chestnut Street here on the bottom of your page and the station place uh uh up on the upper side of the page. Uh, at at the lower side, sta- uh we have a one-way in, one-way out drive loop at about elevation seventeen, and that access is the lower level. Uh, we also do have a an additional drive apron here at the northeast uh corner of the site, uh which is for more utility and and courtyard access uh maintenance type driveway, so there's no regular traffic expected at this apron here. Uh, and then as you wrap the corner up Henry Street, uh we hit what would be a call, what I'd call a a mid-elevation uh access to the second level of garage at elevation twenty-four uh plus or minus. And that's a two-way access uh in and out. Uh, and then we continue up and and we have a driveway on the west side of the site that gives us access to the upper level garage, uh which, you know, a- as we continue up here, station place is roughly elevation thirty-three, so we do have a a sixteen foot plus or minus grade difference as you as you wrap around the site. Um. This upper parking lot here does have thirteen surface parking spaces. Uh, in addition, we have a total of two hundred and eighty-two garage spaces, as Adam indicated. And that is inclusive of the required ADA parking spaces and a bid out opportunity for up to uh thirty electric vehicle spaces uh based on TMP common and and current building code uh requirements. It's worth noting that we we have updated the plans to reflect the current uh driveway configuration of station place based on um city TMP and uh the ongoing redevelopment project for station place. Uh, grading and drainage as it relates back to the perimeter of the project site uh will be concoordinated and finalized uh with the city as as the station place uh design advances.
Um, I I have a question.
Go ahead, JJ.
Okay, I'm sorry, I I I had to tune out for like about ten minutes, so um forgive me if this question's already been answered. Um, you are referring to the street as station place or the building as station play place?
Sorry, yeah, that's a good question. The I I'm referring, eh, that that is what uh the city uh redevelopment agency as part of the grant package that Adam was talking about. That's what that that uh the street has been referred to as uh station place uh for conveying uh vehicles through uh by the train station.
On the northbound side, so um that whole street is going through a rename?
No, not not Chestnut Tree, JJ. It's the where the at the train station itself.
Yeah. Yes, this is at the train station itself.
The park.
Uh, go going.
The current self on parking lot.
Right. And then I think I heard you say something about a one-way street. I mean, are are the street configurations going to be changed?
I would, I would let Greg uh Del Rio answer that during the traffic portion.
Sure.
Oh. Alright.
I have a question on the grading portion. Um, the um public space, public park um between the shirt factory and proposed development, uh it looks like it does have a uh stair.